Yeah, yeah, it's not bad. Kind of in the, in the know, you know, and definitely a different perspective. I'm kind of getting over that. I mean, it's, I'm still learning as far as that goes and like, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate? No, no, I, I, I hear, I hear you. Yeah, that'll come with time, you know, still brand new. Find something to, yeah. Never noticed, never noticed. You always seem cool as a cucumber. Yeah, this is, this is still out of my element a little bit, you know, feel more comfortable with my uniform on. Yeah, no, it's been, yeah, it's been kind of, kind of light as far as that goes. We'll see this new town hall project, see how that goes. I mean, did, did you read, it's supposed to go through down there with it? No, but you have the solution too though, you know, not just masturbate the problem. Come up with some sort of solutions for them. Help your leadership higher.
Just one. He may, but I told him I don't think he knows, I hear the last time. I don't think he does.
Good evening, welcome to the April seventeenth meeting of Glenville Town Board. Please rise for the rest of each party with invocation and pledge allegiance. For tonight's invocation, I just ask that you offer your own intentions in silence. Amen. Please call the roll.
Councilman Ramatgar.
Here.
Councilman Bluey.
Here.
Councilman Aragosa.
Here.
Councilman Kirkland.
Here.
Supervisor Texler.
Here. Welcome all. We do have just a few quick additions to the agenda. First of all, after the public hearings, which the last one would be item number seven, after that public hearing, we do have a presentation from D E C regarding the KenCo cleanup process. So we're very excited for that because we're getting a lot of attention in, on that in the town. May have made some impact on Freeman's Bridge Road lately, so that's, we're very excited for that. And we have three add-ons at the end of the meeting. We'll take those up after, before new business, actually. Add-on one is a resolution settling any tax cert between Town of Glenville and Mizone Hospitality. Resolution add-on three, two is authorizing, authorizing the supervisor to sign a contract in respect to a land donation from New York Development Group regarding the Hortzman Drive P V D. I will explain that with more or get to it. Add-on number three is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to take the next necessary steps to acquire the Freeman's Bridge Road multi-use cap project right away and easement acquisitions. So those are the three add-ons. There are no, anything coming off the agenda. So with that, we'll go on to town council reports. I'll start on my left with Councilman Aragosa.
Uh, just a couple things. Um, you know, on my way here, I, earlier today, I dropped off tents and tables to the Fresh Cables event with some towns right here that Glenville branch of First National Bank night. It was supposed to go from five to seven by six thirty, they were out of food. So, you know, so the sea gloves show coming, you know, the, the need is there. And I collected the tables, the tents, the stuff to bring back home for the next event, which will be the third Wednesday of May. The S B D, Bill is bringing in for the First National Bank, Mohawk Avenue. And I think that's it for reports at the moment.
Thank you. Councilman Kirk.
Yes, a few things to report. Bulk item, which started this past week, is still going on in the town. So I would urge residents to be patient with that. They are pursuing it and going after everything that's out there. So it, it will be done. Brush storm damage has been a big issue. We've had some high winds and the highway superintendent assures me that he's out there with crews picking up that storm damage as well. I would also like to say today, I'm very proud to congratulate Sergeant Agostino. Today was his last day as a Glenville police officer. He retired and I appreciate his dedication and service to this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ramatgar.
All right, no reports.
Councilman Bluey.
No report.
Excellent, thank you. And we'll move right into the public hearings. So the first public hearing, I am really hoping, the, the two first public hearings actually relate very closely to each, to each other. And it's really a opportunity to take two separate codes of, sections of our code that deal with solar and really make sure that the language is similar in both sections. Right now, there's some disconnect. Although the meetings are the same, the words are different and so there's some confusion. And so this is really one of the main things we will do in these two public hearings and these two changes to our code is to really marry up the Energy Farm Overlay District code with the Solar Energy Farm Overlay Districts. As you can see, there's some confusion right there at those two titles. So I will start by opening the public hearing. All those interested in being heard on an amendment to Town Code Chapter 270 with respect to solar energy to modify certain definitions and to conform approval standards to other areas of our solar code. I wish to be heard on that matter. Going once, going twice, seeing none. That public hearing is not closed. Next public hearing relates to that amendment, and this is an amendment to the Glenville Town Code 270 regarding solar energy farm overlay districts. We'll open that public hearing. I wish to be heard on that matter. Going once, going twice, seeing none. And that public hearing is not closed. The next public hearing is a public hearing to hear all those interested in the proposed local law to terminate the interim or temporary suspension on review approval and issuance of permits relating to hotels and motels. That is now open. This is to remove the temporary suspension of permits for hotels and motels of Glenville. I wish to be heard on that matter. Going once, going twice, seeing none. Our three public hearings are not closed in a matter of three minutes, so that's very good. Before we take up those resolutions, I do want to invite Elise DeBois from D E C to present on the KenCo cleanup, which we're very excited about. And before you begin, I do want to thank and congratulate you and your entire team and the folks at D E C. I, a quick story on this, as you all know, this started how many years ago when we worked with D E C to get the water hookups for our folks on Sunnyside Gardens because that plume was heading towards them. And I think at that time, we were budget lined and we were supposed to get the cleanup going. And I remember getting the call, I think it was Chris O'Donnell at the time, maybe, and said, you know, something happened called Hoozick Falls, and I think a lot of resources got devoted, gone over to Hoozick Falls. And he said, you know, we'll try to come back to you someday. And I said, oh my God, once you're out of the budget, they're never coming back to you. But I really appreciate it. You didn't forget about us and you came back and you're going to take care of this. And we're here to help in any way we can. We're working very well together so far, so thank you for all that you've done. The new town hall will address this issue, okay?
Yeah, so I, we back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, that we got that alternate water supply hooked up for you guys. And we're going back and we're moving into former KenCo chemical site. So our location is one oh seven Freeman's Bridge Road. It's located right up the road from Lowe's. It's across the street from Glenville Bevere, between that railroad line there. And this is our source area. Main contamination on site is petrofluoral ethylene, P C E. It's in the groundwater and the soil. And as Chris was mentioning, our groundwater plume extends ways off-site and down, affecting local residents there. Our selected remedy from the two thousand and fifteen Record of Decision, R R O D, was N C, N C two thermal, which is kind of a unique remedy and one that we don't see too often. This is a map of our site layout. So a little bit about N C two thermal is it involves heating up the soil and the groundwater to vaporize the contaminants. Those are collected and treated on-site. So it'll look different than a lot of our other remediations that we do. Most of our other remediations are excavation. And though there will be a bit of that with our site preparation, and there's a few places that we do need to excavate. But for a majority of the treatment, it's going to look like a concrete cap with some pipes stepping up and heading to a paper treatment system on-site. So as far as some impacts to the town, we do expect some increased truck traffic down Freeman's Bridge Road and on Lowe's Drive, but most of our site access, we're planning on coming off of Lowe's Drive. So we're not expecting too much coming off of Freeman's Bridge Road. That being said, there are some small excavations that will have to take place next to Freeman's Bridge Road. And we do expect some flaggers that might be in place during those. That are hopefully here. So Justin from Glen Remediation will be able to, you know, work with you guys and talk about when that. Additional, you know, some impacts to the town, noise might be an issue. We'll be working within, you know, Town Glenville's working hours. And then we also have a community air monitoring program in place to ensure that, you know, we're keeping track of dust and ensuring that none of that is really going off-site or any potential contamination is going off-site. That was my very brief, quick presentation, give you an overview of what's going on there.
So two quick questions for the board. One would be, I believe we talked about the entire property will be fenced. Is that correct for?
Yep.
Any of your timeframe as far as how long this project will take?
Yeah, I forgot to mention the timeframe. So this is a longer project. We're expecting about three years. So we're expecting until about twenty twenty-seven. The entire property will be fenced. In this diagram, you can kind of see where our fence line goes. But it extends a little bit onto that railroad property and then down to those few parcels.
Is it the yellow?
The, it's actually this like black X line.
You spare no expense, it should have been.
Yep, so it's this whole area up through here. So back in here, there's going to be a retention pond, mostly because this yellow area, this is going to be our thermal treatment area. So that's where most of the contamination lies. And because it will be an impervious surface, we've had to have a little stormwater runoff management system over here.
Elise, are those two parcels, it looks like two parcels, right?
So it's, I think it's three parcels in here.
Yeah, it's actually three, right?
This is, this is the main site, and then there's, there's this little like, I think it was a former road here. And then there's another parcel down there.
Is that for each?
This, this northern one is.
Yeah. And you have environmental, you've been on that as well?
Um, I don't believe, we don't have environmental easement in place currently.
Or he's just working with you?
But, yeah, yeah, we have access to this, to this northern one.
And you, and you're saying you're tapping the entire property with concrete and then?
So this yellow outline, this thermal treatment area, will have a, a temporary, I think it's going to be concrete or it's going to be another thermal, or thermal and vapor area.
And then, and, and then you heat the soil below. Very interesting.
It's essentially the poster elements in this place.
Yeah.
And the foundation of the current building will be removed?
Yep.
Which would be huge.
During that site cap, I have a, a company, some other thing on those, these three parcels up there will all be removed.
Do you guys have any questions? Well, we appreciate your time. We appreciate your effort and all your work on this.
Oh, yeah, I'm just going to introduce everyone real quick. So Justin List is from the media manager, contract, or project manager. We also have Dean Cavada, who's project manager, and Steve Shad, he's also from Ramble and he's been on-site. Ben Rong, who's the supervisor from D E C.
Hey, thank you.
I would absolutely like to thank the whole team and I'm super excited that we're going to take a piece of property and remediate it and actually make it useful again. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you out there. D E C is more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But if you're not interested in anything else going on, that was a good time that you might want to, want to leave. But you're welcome to stay. We run a quick meeting, so it won't be long. Move on to item number eight. It is a resolution adopting Local Law Five, twenty twenty-four regarding the Code Chapter 270 with respect to the solar energy and modification of certain definitions regarding solar energy farm overlay districts. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this?
Uh, no, Mr. Supervisor, as stated, this is just making changes to the code.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please record the vote.
Councilman Ramatgar.
Yes.
Councilman Bluey.
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes.
Supervisor Texler.
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution, nine, adopting Local Law Six, regarding amendments to the Glenville Town Code 270 regarding solar energy farm overlay districts. As I mentioned, this is again a cleanup provision to marry the definitions of the two different codes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record the vote.
Councilman Ramatgar.
Yes.
Councilman Bluey.
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes.
Do you guys have a question?
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution is Resolution Ten, adopting Local Law Number Seven, titled A Local Law to Terminate the Interim or Temporary Suspension on Review Approval and Door Issuance of All Permits for Relating to Hotels and Motels in the Town of Glenville. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. At this juncture, you're welcome if you'd like to take a moment to talk about your project for the applicant of what's coming in, or we can just go forward. It's, it's up to you. If you'd like to go to the podium and present, Luigi or Charles or not.
Hi, thank you. My name's Charles Dumas. I'm an attorney. I represent Matrix Hotels, its affiliated companies, and Babak Jarawala. Mr. Jarawala's here this evening. Mr. Jarawala has made a large investment in Glenville. He is the owner of the properties at two and four Freeman's Bridge Road, which consist of the Max Four Ten Restaurant, the Homewood Suites, and a banquet facility. He developed the Homewood Suites in cooperation with the town and the Papalizio family. And when the Papalizios decided to retire from the restaurant business, he purchased those properties as well. The moratorium had a direct impact on his ability to further develop that property. But it really served its purpose in the sense that it enabled a dialogue between the town and Mr. Jarawala in his interest to further develop that area. It was made known to us by the administration and by the town planners of the importance for the Freeman's Bridge Road corridor. And we've established a plan that, you know, hopefully will work successfully through the, the planning process to develop a hotel, some pad sites, and some retail right along that, that corridor.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Charles. We do have the motion moved. I do want to take a moment before we have any other discussion on it and thank Babak. I did this last time, but you weren't here. I want to thank Luigi, Charles, and you, Babak, for all your hard work with the town. We had, as Charles said, I think, a great dialogue over a long period of time. You know, at times it got maybe frustrating for people or frustrating with each other, but I think we each listened to each other and we got to a much, much better place, I think, for, for both of us because of that. And so I want to thank you for your dedication. You could have just walked away and said, I'm not investing in Glenville, but you stayed with it and I think you came in with a great project that I've always supported. So I want to thank you for that. Anybody else have anything else to say?
I just want to say, I think this is fantastic. I mean, here we are tonight, listening to the D E C talking about a project that's going to clean up a site. This is something that's going to happen on a site that, you know, I watched for probably, I think it was about three years as well, cleaning that site, and now you're taking it to the next level, which, you know, I, it's fantastic. Thank you.
It's almost like Freeman's Bridge Road has been a focus of ours. Yes, it works. Any else have anything else to say? Seeing none, please record the vote.
Councilman Ramatgar.
Yes.
Councilman Bluey.
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes.
Supervisor Texler.
Yes, resolution passes. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you in the future. Next resolution, another exciting one, is authorizing the supervisor to enter into an agreement with D E P and C two to develop a detailed bid document for any town hall located on the campus of Eighteenth Glen Ridge Road in Glenville, New York. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. This is an important next step in our long progress in delivering a new, modern, state-of-the-art town hall for our residents and our employees. And this will give us the ability to move forward and execute all the design agreements that we need with the team, including, which is Environmental Design New Partnership and C two Design Group. And this will allow us to move forward in developing bid documents for the town hall to be located at the campus as has been discussed with this, by this board for the past couple of months. So we have it moved. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to emphasize that this just is giving the authority to move forward with presenting bid documents for the project. This is not approving the project. So I don't want residents getting too anxious about what's going on here. There's been a lot of hard work put into this, a lot of discussion. I think we're on a proper, proper path here. And I look forward to, you know, seeing what comes out of this. So thank you for your work, guys.
Thank you. Anything else?
Looking forward to the first steps of bringing our town to the twenty-first century.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, please record the vote.
Councilman Ramatgar.
Yes.
Councilman Bluey.
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes.
Supervisor Texler.
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution, twelve, approving the hire of Henry Brown to fill the vacancy of heavy equipment mechanic position in the highway department. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Mr. Supervisor, this is approving the hiring of Henry Brown to the position of heavy equipment mechanic at our highway department at a rate of thirty-one twenty-seven per hour that is outlined in the C S C A Highway Unit Contract. And I would just like to say, I had a discussion prior to the meeting with Supervisor Capola, and Henry comes highly recommended, so we look forward to you serving the town.
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yeah, we don't want to supervise you.
Superintendent, sorry about that.
Correct the record.
Correct the record.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none.
Did you catch that too, Chad?
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Bluey.
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland.
Yes.
Supervisor Texler.
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution.
Congratulations, Henry.
Yeah, congratulations. Appointing members to the events committee. Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. As you know, at the reorg meetings, set our committees, we set this committee then and there. Since then, there's been interest with our own clerk here, Julie Davenport, taking over and leading the committee. And more people have come forward, so we like to add these new people here, as you can see in the resolution. Ginger Love, Frenier, Susan McLeod, Brittany Pruven, Natasha Taxera, and Lynn Wolkuski. All will be added to join Julie Davenport to go on to our events committee. I'm very excited about the events. I don't know, you guys were putting on this year.
I just want to say, this is really great people who are all of the constraints of the construction. I think it's going to be really best of everything that we've built for the town. I'm excited about.
Thank you.
Keep it up going and what we can accomplish.
It's in good hands. Any other questions or comments?
I, we didn't move it.
Are we moving it?
Yes, we do.
Did we? Did I?
Did we? Did I? So you got me all out of order. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Did I? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that, Julie.
Any other questions or comments? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution, fourteen, approving minutes of the regular town board meeting held on April third, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
And as stated, this is just proving the minutes from the regular board meeting held on April third.
Any other questions or comments? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution, fifteen, approving monthly reports for March twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
And again, as stated, this resolution approves the monthly reports for March.
Any other questions or comments? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Next resolution, add-on one, settling the tax cert between the town of Glenville and the Zon hospitality. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. This is open to the assessor. I and our, uh, tax assessment, uh, counsel have been working on it. I was not under Jeff's purview, but, um, attorney of insulet. And we've been working on trying to settle this, uh, case brought by the Zon administrative group regarding the Glen Sanders. We reached a settlement. They would accept this proposal to, um, they would cease their, uh, proceedings and they would not give any rebates or, um, refunds. And this would set the original value, or I'm sorry, the value from the original assessed value of four point one million to three point four million going forward. And that is really the essence of the settlement. Any questions or comments?
Is there, so unchanged for, I see it, twenty twenty-six. Okay. Thank you.
And that would prevent them from being able to bring another proceeding to a tailwind? Any other questions or comments?
Just thank Bill for his hard work on this. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, yeah. Good, good work by all.
Any other questions? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Next, add-on resolution two, authorizing the supervisor to sign a contract with respect to proposed land donated by New York Development Group, uh, regarding the Horseman Drive P D D. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. Before we start, I just want to introduce this. Um, this is another creative opportunity the town has taken with another great developer who's done work in our town and in our area on the Horseman Farm P D D. Uh, which you all know has, uh, a housing component and also a commercial component. In our conversations with, uh, community groups around the area, it became clear that there's a group, uh, known as the Scotia Glenville Volunteer Firefighters, who have been trying to find a location for a museum to celebrate, uh, Glenville, Scotia Glenville history, uh, fire history. And so in our conversations with the developer, we thought, wouldn't this be a great place for, um, it's perfect. We're building somewhat of a museum corridor here between Legacy Park and, uh, and this museum and E Sam. And, and it just fits really nice into the low-impact, uh, you know, into the community. And so we're able to secure in our discussion with the, um, developer for part of the P D D, we're able to secure the property to be used, uh, for that purpose. So I think it's a great positive for the community. It's a great positive for the firefighters, um, the developer. And I, um, just want to say that it was a long road with these folks. Jeff did a lot of hard work. We spent a lot of time talking about it, a lot of early morning calls. But, um, we're there now. We're, I think, we find, uh, finally found a solution for, um, this group. They are a five oh one C three incorporated. They don't have, yeah, they don't have everything, but, um, they're getting there. And so, um, they have an endowment. They're very excited. They have artifacts. Um, and I think it's gonna be a great thing for the community. Any questions or comments on that? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Next, add-on resolution three, authorizing the supervisor to take necessary steps to acquire Freeman's Bridge Road multi-use path project right-of-way and use it in acquisitions. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second. As you all know, we have many, many projects going on in Freeman's Bridge Road and we have probably the longest resolution I've ever seen written in the history of being a supervisor. It's like eight pages.
I did not.
He did not write it. But it, essentially, this is the first step in our, um, many, uh, steps to the Freeman's Bridge Road, uh, walkway, uh, pedestrian path. And this would be impacting the west side from the bridge to Dutch Meadows. Uh, there's a number of, um, right-of-way acquisitions we have to make there. This will allow us to work with, um, New York State D O T to make those acquisitions. Uh, they're minor in nature in each of the five. I think there's five properties, um, that have not yet signed off. All the other properties have, so these are the last five. And so, um, you can read through the resolution. You know, you see a hundred and fifty-seven square foot taking, uh, six hundred and twenty-seven square foot taking. You could read through all these, um, and see how much it is, but they're, they're minor in nature, but it gives us the ability to engage D O T. There are, there is federal money in this, so, uh, this does allow us to go ahead and do that. It just allows us to engage them to, uh, make sure we get this project on track. Any questions or comments?
The only, the only thing I would like to comment on is, um, you know, we've been talking a lot about economic development this evening. Look at all these projects that are going on. But this is just a wonderful example of, of what is taking place for quality of life issues as well that couples with this development that's happening, uh, creating these walking paths. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and they support each other. The, uh, most of the community support economic development and vice versa. I feel that's great. Hotel is gonna have a lot of walking paths around it, so, uh, that's gonna be positive for them as well.
Yes. And so, so this is basically taking some road frontage to, in order to create a sidewalk.
Yeah. When the sidewalks had a move out of the right-of-way for whatever reason, maybe because of utilities or, or poles, it's taking a little bit more of that frontage to be able to have that easy. And they get compensated for it.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments?
It's, you know, we're not, we're not taking their property. We're, we're paying them.
Buying.
We're buying their property.
Yeah.
In order to put in a, uh, a sidewalk which is designed for everybody.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? See you in a minute.
Councilman Ramichardt?
Yes.
Councilman Blue?
Yes.
Councilman Aragosa?
Yes.
Councilman Kirkham?
Yes.
Supervisor Pettsley?
Yes, resolution passes. Uh, we're on to any new business. I'll start around my left with Councilman Aragosa.
Well, um, so tonight we didn't have a supervisor's report and, you know, there's a, the lingering question is for this board and, and for the town of Glenville is, you know, where are we with the secession plan? And where are we with, you know, uh, when, you know, when you're gonna be taking your new job? And, you know, can you give us some, some information?
Well, we're around town and you're already talking about it and, and making comments of what car I'm driving. So I guess you have all the answers, don't you?
I wish.
Yeah, well, you seem to, because you watch me pretty close. I never had anyone talk about the car I drive at a party. So we'll, uh, we'll get to that in good time when we're ready to talk about it.
Yeah, when will that be? I mean, uh, you know, we're, we're a town, we're a town board. We're a, you know, we're, you know, we're a, a group of people who are equal in, in many people's eyes. Um, why can't we, you know, at least get some information as to what's going on and?
When you know, you will.
Thank you.
Are you anxious for something? Are you anxious for something? You don't want an orderly transition? Is there something in Russia?
I would like an orderly transition, but I, you know, but, you know, there's due process and everything.
And what's the due process?
Well, when, when, when will it be, you know, what's, what's the, what's the date in which, you know, if you don't leave, there's not a special election?
So you're concerned about the political aspects of this?
Sure. Why shouldn't we? Why, why shouldn't we all be?
So you're concerned with politics?
Why shouldn't we be concerned about, why shouldn't we be concerned that the residents are, are not getting their fair, um, um, they're not, they don't have the, you know, the, the say in, in what's going on next? Why shouldn't we as a board be concerned with that?
We do. There's a process for that. You just talked about due process.
Right.
I only talk about due processes, Councilman. Due process is that there's a special election if someone leaves by a certain date. If someone doesn't leave by a certain date, then that next election that occurs, which will happen in November twenty twenty-five, is when those people have a chance to decide who the next supervisor will be. There's a due process.
You're right.
It's there. I don't think you understand it.
No, I understand it. I, no, we just, we just don't, we just don't see it the same way.
Of course not. We don't see it the same way.
We just don't see it the same way.
You're more concerned about the Democratic Party. I'm more concerned about what a proper transition.
Sure.
In the town of Glenville.
Sure.
Do you know, we just talked about all that we have going on in this town.
We do have a lot of great things.
Do you have any involvement in any of it? Like, you don't. You don't.
I, because you don't give us an opportunity.
You had every opportunity in the world.
We, we do not get the opportunity. We do not.
You take no interest in anything, but you're taking interest in when I walk out that door because you are more concerned about a special election. It's disgusting. Disgusting.
Thank you.
And I will not let you politicize something so important as having a proper transition for this town.
Thank you.
This is an important thing for this town. We're at an important point in this town and we're gonna do this in the right manner, not on Mike Aragosa's schedule, because he wants to run for supervisor.
I actually don't, but.
Thank God.
That's, that's a whole nother story.
Councilman Kirkham? Any new business?
I guess, uh, I'll just comment on this interaction. Um, you know, personally, um, you know, I was an employee for the town of Glenville for twenty-six and a half years. Currently took a, uh, board position back in July and was elected in November. And, um, I would just like to point out, um, I think the supervisor is handling this very well. Um, I think that there is a lot of town business, um, at hand. I think, um, a transition period is more than at required. Um, I think a good transition is required here. Um, I think that looking at the residents and understanding the full scope of what happens in this municipality with a twenty-two million dollar budget needs to be handled with due process. And, um, I think that if we take our time and we do this correctly, I think that it ensures the things that have been happening in this community to continue happening in this community in a proper fashion. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ramichardt?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to, uh, comment on, uh, the comments just now. Uh, I agree with Bob. Um, there is so much, uh, that you've, that, that the town has seen happen and you've gone through and been a part of, Chris, uh, within the last sixteen, seventeen years or something like that, when we first started as well. Uh, it, the town has come from pretty much, uh, not being a place that people wanted to shop and feel is safe and proud of to, uh, where it is now. And, and that transition is probably gonna take a little bit longer and doing it the right way is, is almost mandatory and expected to, to maintain that progress. So I agree. I mean, you know, uh, it's gonna happen, um, in time. I, hopefully, we will have things in place. But, uh, you know, I trust your decision and, uh, what you've done in the past, so you, you will see fit when it's time to move on.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Green?
On a lighter note, I just have a couple announcements. Um, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, is the next monthly Glenville Traffic Safety Committee meeting at four o'clock in the middle bar of the room. And on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, between ten a.m. and two p.m., is the bi-annual D E A-sponsored drug takeback event, which I, uh, April twenty-seventh, Saturday. I believe both the Glenville Police Department and the Villages Scotia Police Department are participating, and that's an event where anybody can respond to any participating police department or pharmacy that's participating. And they can, uh, drop off unwanted controlled substances for safe disposal. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Um, I do have some items for update that I, uh, do not have a report tonight because we had some, I swapped for D E C's presentation. Um, but just real quick, a few good, uh, few good pieces of news, I think. Um, number one, I, both Councilman Kirk, Kirkham and I, Deputy Supervisor Kirkham and I attended the Good News Lunch today, uh, that was put on by the chamber. And they, uh, honored a few folks around the area for all the good work you're doing in our community. Mohawk Tapping from Scotia was honored and we were, uh, proud to be there for that. I also want to congratulate and thank Sergeant Agusino for his service to the town and wish him the best of luck on his retirement. Um, I've been working with the county, uh, senior services and they are, have been revamping their much-needed and very important hot food program for, uh, seniors, our shut-ins. Uh, it went through a lot of changes and they're finally getting, just now, we'll be getting back to five days a week, uh, on, on hot foods. And it really couldn't be possible if it wasn't for the town of Glenville, working with them in partnership at our senior center and allowing our senior center facility to be used as a launching pad delivery, uh, origins for the hot foods. So we're very excited about that as well. Um, Councilman Kirkham and I have, uh, had a chance to meet a, a lot of economic development, um, meetings lately. But one of the most exciting ones is, uh, out at Murray's Fools on Route Five. You're gonna see, uh, come to the planning board, a, um, expansion for a nice party room. It's gonna really add to, uh, that whole campus. That is really a well-kept secret in the town of Glenville. It's a distillery. It's a rick house. Uh, it's, it's a tasting room. And now they're gonna have, uh, food and, and party house facilities as well. So we're very excited about, uh, that. Um, I will just say, uh, to close the conversation, that, um, this transition is a work in sight, or work in progress, I should say. Uh, when we know what the date is, we will announce that date. Some parameters as to what's on my mind is what's best for the town of Glenville in this transition. Not when special elections will occur or who will do what or who's gonna run or not run. That is background noise that I don't care about. The only thing I care about is that I'm leaving the town of Glenville in the best possible position after fifteen years of service as the supervisor, seventeen on this board. It's my obligation. It's my responsibility. And it's something I am not gonna walk away from until I am comfortable with all that we have in front of us, that this board is ready, that our new employees are ready, and that this town is ready to move forward. I will share my plans as soon as they're available. Bob and I have been working very closely on the transition. We've had other transitions going on, on the staff, comptroller, deputy, uh, D P W commissioner, deputy D P W commissioner. There's a lot of key positions we're talking about now. And so this will be shared when it's time to be shared. But my parameters, so you know where my mind is, is that, um, I will make sure that this town's in the best possible position before I walk out the door. I've said that from the beginning. It's consistent with what I've said always, and it will remain that way. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move any second.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or adjourned? Thank you.